Good evening. Call to order the District 208 Board of Education on June 10, 2025. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Molo, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cukio.
President.
Mr. Durkheim.
Yes.
Ms. Gascon here. Mr. Ross Condon here. Mr. Milbeck. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here. Dr. Freitas.
Good evening, our board members. Congratulations to Jory Eggers on qualifying for the IHSA Girls Track and Field State Meet in the 400-meter race. At sectionals, Jory qualified with a time of 58.63 seconds, beating the school record she set earlier this year. We're also proud of Jory and wish her all the best as she continues her education at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. I love. Congratulations to Jory. Unfortunately, folks, she couldn't join us this evening, but we got a school record holder in Jory. Congratulations to Brady Norman and Matthew Torrance on qualifying for the IHSA Boys Track and Field State Meet. Brady qualified for the 3200-meter race and Matthew qualified for the pole vault. Brady set a school record for the 3200-meter run with a time of 9 minutes, 17 seconds, and 65.65. Matthew will attend the University of the Men, excuse me. Matthew will attend Iowa State University in the fall, and Brady will run cross-country and track at the University of Wisconsin La Crosse. And for Matthew Torrance, another special recognition, he broke the school record, set a school record with a height of 14 feet, 1 inches. Congratulations, man. Thank you so much. We're extremely proud of you. Thank you. Congratulations. Board of Education, that concludes the recognition part of the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas, and again, congratulations. Do you want to step out for a quick picture? Regarding reports, just for the for the audience and those watching at home, we do have Dr. Skinkis available via phone. He was unable to attend. This actually is the first time in my my tenure on the board that he wasn't out in person, so I just want to make sure people are aware. Dr. Smetana, very capably, will you provide the the next couple of reports for us?
Yes, I believe Dr. Skinkis would like to provide the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Thank you, President Davis. Thank you, Kristen. Real briefly, just one on the superintendent's report, Senate Bill 637. We got some very good news. Seven to 10 days ago, that Senate Bill 637 had passed both the Senate and the House and the state legislature, so this allows us to work with the Brookfield Zoo to do a sublease or a license lease for the land immediately north of the school for extracurricular programming. So that's very good news. Thank you to Senator Perforio and Representative Hernandez. I am scheduled to meet with them later this week, so I will update the board accordingly as those meetings concur and continue. Facilities advisory met on the 29th to review some summer projects, the facility rental agreement, and to receive a status update on the solar panel project. Dr. Smetana will go into more details on those items. Policy advisory is scheduled to meet next week, and as I continue with my discussions with the zoo, I will probably be reconvening the purchase sale or lease of land advisory council as needed. That concludes my report for tonight.
Are there any questions for Dr. Skinkis from afar? Okay. Dr. Smetana.
Tonight, I'll provide Board of Education with financial information through the month of May, which represents 92% of our fiscal year. The total operating revenue for the month was $742,383, with 41% from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, 25, 29% from local revenue, and 18% from CP-PRT, primarily, and a little bit of that was property tax as well. The total operating expenditures for the month were $3,546,600, with 63% towards salary and benefits, 15% on operations and maintenance. Primarily, we had two big purchases. We had to pay for the grand piano, as well as the weight room floor this past month, and then 6% each on special education tuition and transportation. The next set of reports is the monthly financial statements. Before I go into the summary of revenues, you'll see the summary of the fund balances, which shows that right now in our operating funds, we have a little bit over $2 million when you look at revenues versus expenditures. If we don't receive any additional money in terms of revenue for the month of June, I anticipate finishing the budget year with a small deficit of around maybe $100,000, but it all depends on how much property tax we get in in the month of June. That's kind of really the big unknown at this point. So moving on to the next page, you'll see the summary of revenue shows that the district has received 97.85% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is tracking a little lower to this time last year, which was at 99.88%. Like I said, a lot of that is property tax at this point. The summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 88.12% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this amount's just slightly lower to this time last year.
Dr. Smetana, we know that the property tax collections will be delayed by Cook County by at least a month. Have we seen anything? I have not seen anything additional about a delay, but I think one month is our working number, or have you heard otherwise?
I have only heard one month at this point.
And that it was a month earlier last year. That's why we had different numbers last year, is what you're saying?
At this point last year, we had collected a majority of our property tax revenue, which is standard. This year, we're running just, I don't want to say behind. I don't know if people aren't paying. We eventually collect that money. It's just, it's a timing issue.
Got it.
And I was referring to the next collection, not the prior.
Right. I was just curious as to the discrepancy between this year, this year, last year at this time and this year.
The only reason, too, that our revenue is at 97.85% and not lower is because we collected about double of our interest on investment revenue than what I had budgeted for.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, the gap would be more significant.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, as always, I included a statement of revenue and expenditures for board accounts, as well as activity accounts for the month of May. I have a few other additional updates tonight. The Facility Advisory Council met on May 29th, as Dr. Skinkis referenced, and we talked about the quarterly business review from Aramark, which is provided for the Board of Education for your information. It's a very lengthy report. It's nice because it shows a lot of what Aramark does provide for the district. There were a few typos that have been corrected, and then there was a question submitted about Eller. So they, Aramark will go over to Eller Park and do a lot of the maintenance on game days. So if the grass needs to be cut on game day because it's too long, we'll do that. They'll prepare the infield for game days, and then they just, West Suburban Conference usually handles the other maintenance.
Well, that's what I had thought, and I was surprised to see their reference to Eller in the packet, but thank you for explaining.
Yes, and that's been a, that's been a standard for quite some time, where Aramark will go over on game days to make sure that the field is in playable condition for our athletes.
Ostensibly, would that change if the deal actually goes through for the park?
I don't anticipate that because we will need it for lower levels, so we will still need additional field space.
Okay. Thank you.
Liability insurance update. Wanted to provide an update to the board, so it'll be at the next few meetings, but back in November, we discussed the district's options for liability insurance, given significant price increase that we've had over the last five years. But due to the timing of the renewal date, which was December 1, it wasn't really enough time to evaluate options. So I've met with two insurance cooperatives for schools, and I will be working through the superintendent's sub-advisory council for liability insurance. I thought I'd have the information prior to this meeting, but we're waiting on one more piece of information before we can evaluate preliminary options this month, and then in October is when we'll be able to have a comprehensive analysis and bring a recommendation to the board.
And that's a 12-1.
And that's a 12-1 renewal, correct. And then lastly, Quest Food Service. I meet with Quest quarterly to review their service, as well as their staffing and pricing. And price increases were reviewed for the 2526 school year at our last meeting. I provided the list of all recommendations that will be implemented in the fall, but they were very thoughtful and went through item by item, and you can see that a majority of items will remain flat, 31 items, and then 21 items is the next biggest that will increase by a quarter. So students will see that slight price increase when they return in the fall. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Are there any questions for Dr. Smetana? Seeing none, Dr. Freitas.
Greetings again, our board members. The teaching and learning, we're two weeks into summer school. Everything's going well. The drivers at Carter Field, the school is full. You have students here participating in athletics and the arts, you know, and we have seniors, you know, earning the credit so they can graduate in July. So summer school is off and running, and things are going very well. Our summer school graduation will be on July 8. Traditionally, we've done it at 6:30, 30 minutes before the board meeting. If the board would like to go in another direction, you know, I'm always open, but traditionally, we've always done it at 6:30. That was a question that was submitted my way.
And I wasn't suggesting a change in time. I just wanted to put it in my calendar, to be honest. I think the board is probably comfortable with 6:30 still.
6:30 works.
Does that work for everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay. It's an important event, and we want to be here and have some cake before the meeting. I think that's it.
How many students do we have?
So we should have ideally about four or five, depending on the circumstance.
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
Now, on the school culture and operations, in a few minutes, two of our assistant principals will be presenting their reports regarding engagement, attendance, and athletics. July is a big month. We have a residency on the 9, 16, 23rd, and the 30th, on the first day is 82 in the cafeteria, on the 16th and 20, 30, 11 to 7, and on the 30th, it is 82. It is very important that families submit their paperwork online before they get an in-person appointment. We reiterate that many times, and I'm just doing it one more time. In August, August 7, we have freshman orientation from 10 to 11:30 in the main gym. On the 7th, in the afternoon, just in the evening, excuse me, just as we did last year, we will have our family welcome back night from 4 to 6 in the main gym. On the 20th, we have our open house from 6 to 7:30 throughout the building. On the activities and athletics, August 11 is the first day of sports. First day school is August 12, the day after, and then in September, we have our homecoming game and our homecoming dance, all right? Again, reminding everyone of one school starts, one school starts, and homecoming. That concludes my principal's report. Now, on the board, at the board's pleasure, we will have our assistant principals do the presentations.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to welcome up Mr. Dave Mannan, Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, who will present the second semester climate and culture report as it relates to engagement, attendance, and behaviors. And also, he joining us is Dean Hakkus.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Before we... Let's take a quick handoff there. Thank you.
Is this different than?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we're going to provide a summary of the 2425 school year, focusing on performance indicators as it relates to average daily attendance. This report's going to be more of a summary of second semester. We'll come back as the admin team and give you an overall, more in-depth look on this performance indicator in October, I believe-ish.
Mr. Mannan, should we bring up the tables for our audience? So while you're speaking, so we get the right page? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we are...
Yeah, I think he was still on his cover memo.
Okay.
Yeah, no, good point there.
Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure your tables are...
Appreciate it. Okay.
For those watching at home, make sure you can find them.
So this report is just a brief summary of second semester and then overall ADA's we see it right now. Those numbers may change as we get to the average, the total average, our highest three months, as reported to the state, but as for now, we'll give you the data as it relates to second semester and the overall average that we have. So this year, our overall ADA attendance rate was 92.2%, which remains consistent with the previous school year. Our office continues to implement embedded strategies to improve communication and accountability. One of those was an avenue that we use through Skyward for notifications, that alert parents to unverified absences, cuts, things like that. Those are daily reminders that get pushed out from our school messenger app and Skyward to families, and we started that midway through the third quarter. It took some time to get going, but we saw some benefits with that, and that's something we'll continue going forward here. Additionally, we developed and created a comprehensive attendance handbook that will be embedded and integrated into the opening pages of next year's student handbook, and those student handbooks will be issued at the in-person registration appointments for students. And basically what it is, it just takes all of our procedures that we have related to attendance, puts it in a nice chart. We presented that out as we went through the handbook process, but it's a nice, easy flow chart for families to use for seeing how many days are allowed, mental health-wise, and then all those procedures related to how do I call in, how do I use the Skyward app, how do I check my students' attendance, and then tally charts, so on and so forth. So they don't have to dig for it. It's right there in the first, front couple pages of the handbook for next year. So that was completed, and that will be up and running for the next school year. Dean and I are remaining committed to addressing our chronic absenteeism. We actively collaborate with external partners, including West 40, our regional office of education, our conference schools, which is nice to have a set of public schools that we can, you know, go back and forth regarding our engagement, our activities, our attendance, and what schools are doing there. And then, as recently as today, I participated in, helped facilitate attendance conversations at the AP Dean Summit held at Willbrook High School. So it's always good when you can get fellow high schools and their administrators in a room to talk attendance and see what everyone's doing and best practices there.
So anecdotally, I think we've all seen news reports about attendance post-pandemic, but is that what we're seeing from the upstate, from those colleagues as well?
Yes. There's a recent article that came out, I believe, about Viant Township, too, and we're all in the same boat, you know, since 1920, we'll go from there, sploppy decline in average attendance rates, similar to what we're seeing here. I'm proud that our chronic absenteeism rate is a little bit lower than our fellow neighboring school districts, but it's something that we need to continue to work on and get down. You know, when we look at five or more absences, we're right around 19 or so percent, and so we want to bring that down to, you know, manageable areas where we're like 10, 12%, which was pre-pandemic. So we'll continue to work on that and go forward. Looking more specifically at our data second semester, saw some increases in absences due to illnesses, around 600 or so, and around 650 used personal days. And that number seems a little bit higher just because we recategorized how we code things based on, at the end of the year, we report out to the state, but we also report out to a different report, and so we had to, for civil rights and some other things, and so we wanted to condense it and make it kind of easier classes for us when we go to submit those reports, so that's why we had to move a couple areas into personal. And that could have been, you know, a family sick emergency or a family member got injured, something like that. Those all go into more of the personal category going forward. And the last couple areas here, you know, mental health days stayed consistent. There's a little bit of a decrease of the number of students that utilize mental health days, however, the number of days stayed the same. So, you know, more students, sorry, less students used, the total number of students was less, however, the amount was more. Sorry, I've been talking all day. I'm tired here, so. All right, this time, return. There's no questions.
Are there any questions on this? Because often, there's some discussion or questions from, you know, I mean, I appreciate you breaking out the tables, and I think you keep refining how you present everything, so that's appreciated. It kind of anticipates our questions, so thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn to Mr. Hakkus for the behavior report.
I haven't been talking all day. I've been driving. So I better be, better be on my game here. So the good news is, you know, students were better behaved the second semester in comparison to last year. We went from 4 to 4 to 26. So, you know, we could talk about the different classes that we get, you know, this class is a rotted class, that class is, you know, pretty chill, but for the most part this year, the second semester, discipline was down, okay? I think part of it is, you know, Ms. Weinberg and myself, we're very consistent with the kids. They know us at this point. They know we're pretty much fair. They know our style, right? We're transparent with them. We're, we have clear expectations. They see us in the CAF every day. I'm hoping that's what, you know, is helping with the behaviors, right? But the kids were very good second semester this year overall. You see the breakdowns by race, second semester, for the most part, compared to last year, you know, depending on the number, the number of students, for the most part, the same. And then suspensions per grade, also, we had another, these are the last document that Mr. Mannan gave you, gives you a breakdown of last year compared to this year, is pretty much, again, the same from freshmen to seniors. You go to the next page, you got a breakdown of like specific suspensions on, you know, there you go, you know, drug smoking, you know, vapes and all that stuff that went down this second semester compared to last year.
Are we still using the vape detectors?
Vape detectors, yeah.
Yeah, those are vital in keeping these numbers down, and I was talking about the day today with the deans regarding like what are consistent procedures that schools are using, and what we're doing is, you know, we have the sensors in the bathrooms. The kids know about that. We talk about that in grade level assemblies. If those sensors go off, we have someone that's in the video room upstairs from the security department that watches and monitors things and then reroutes security to see what's going on. That consistent practice alone has really dropped our numbers, and we're seeing great benefits of that.
These were much higher a couple years ago.
Absolutely. Yeah, and this is still plaguing a lot of school districts and a lot of high schools in the area, and so just the fact that we're staying consistent with it and we're not lacking. So if there is an alert that goes off, we're not just bypassing it. We're going to see each and every one of those and then escort students down to see what's going on, but that has been very successful for us.
So, Mr. Mannan, do you, because we're now like almost four years, do you see a kind of qualitative difference between our incoming freshman class and maybe like our senior class? Because our incoming freshman wouldn't have had that whole two and a half years of...
It's hard to predict what classes and behaviors are like, to be honest with you. You know, finished up my 10th year here, and I think it's kind of like ebbs and flows with each grade level. This semester, fantastic behavior, and I think it comes from the familiarity, one with the deans and like the connections at our staff, and then, you know, the opportunities that we create and make for those students. So it's really hard, you know, if we have an engaged class of freshmen, which you'll see in our engagement report, they were, we usually see lower behavior in the building. So, and then the seniors, first semester, if you can see there on that last chart I gave you, had a little bit of a higher behavior percentage first semester, and then we put some things in place that it will go into, such as increased locker room supervision this year. We saw some, you know, altercations down the locker room first semester, so now that we have two people down there, we put security staff down there, and they had a consistent rotation. Those numbers just plummeted and went down, so that that was great in regards to fights and things like that. So I think with more supervision, more accountability, consistent practices, and just positive relationships that we build with kids, that usually helps out, rather than them coming off of the pan that Iker or things like that, so.
It probably takes one year, right, for those freshmen to see us and see how things flow in the building, and, okay, this is how they do it here, so, you know, let's straighten up or whatever. And if we look at the last page, just a few things, they have the chart, right?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that's just a person from all of last year to this year, right? And I guess, you know, we had a total of 58 suspensions this year, which was a far less number than last year. A few things that we're doing, Mr. Mannan mentioned already, you know, that one pager for attendance in the handbook, it's a nice goal, too, for parents, families to see, or, you know, a good, a good tool for them, right? We've been sending attendance progress reports via Skyward, daily, actually, right? But we get like a summary, like a progress report every three weeks, too. We've had behavior and attendance contracts. We focus on seniors this year. We use prom, right, with our high flyers, and that seemed to work, so, you know, when they want to do something, they're going to adjust that behavior, right? And then we've been using Hero for a bunch of different things, you know, sometimes over-communication, but I think that's, that can't, that can't hurt, right? Whether it's for inappropriate electronic device usage or like excessive time out of class, you know, we send that alert right away to the parents, like, hey, you know, have that conversation with your student once they get home. And like Mr. Mannan said, we have increased locker room supervision before and after PE class. And again, security has been doing a real nice job with being visible and letting us know, anytime they see anything, they let us know right away. Students know that we address everything. Sometimes they, like, I think I've said this before, they say we do too much, while others say we don't do enough, right? But we always do something, so they know we're going to address it.
A big thing that I'll add on to that as well is, like, we have a lot of different communication platforms that we use, so Skyward's more of like the data piece, so, you know, if there's, you know, a discipline referral that comes in, you know, we use that avenue for the data there. You talked about Hero. That's more for automated responses for like a no dress for PE or a cellphone violation, electronic devices. But the third avenue that we use is Remind. We have an open platform with Remind, and so we develop with parents, too, with kids, but they can actually get on their cell phones and use Remind, that app to communicate with our deans directly, and so usually when we see our high flyers, we use that avenue as a check-in, and then that starts the, that positive relationship building and positive communication avenue with those students, and that's been very beneficial, like, hey, Ms. Weinberg, hey, Mr. Hakkus, I'm not feeling great today. It's a situation at home, you know, all right, come in first period, let's talk, let's get in front of it, instead of like this blowing up in class and we're not aware of it. So that's been amazing, and so really thankful of having all these different platforms and avenues, because at the end of the day, it comes out of communication and support, and that's, you know, hopefully what we're doing, and getting in front of things, which is a blessing here, instead of always being on our heels and responding to situations this year. I think more than ever, you guys have really done a good job of getting in front of things, talking with students in the cafeteria, being visible, and being present, and that's helped these numbers go up.
Yeah, I really want to point out, you know, we've heard so many tragic stories of high schools in Chicago, and I hope our families look at the tables, you know, the numbers for gang offenses are zero, you know, for theft, we have one, weapons possession, zero. Couple of times, students have walked out of a high school and there's been shooting. We are just so privileged, and it's, it's not by accident, it's the hard work you're doing every day, you know, your whole team, and we just really thank you very much for that, and I hope our families take the time to look at that and recognize that you're poured in your heart and your soul to make this a really great place for our kids.
Yeah, just to add on to that, we have a student equity leadership group as part of our equity strand, and they did a student survey, and just asked students, how do you feel about, you know, the facility itself, your safety, and overwhelmingly, those percentages came back as positive for us.
Nice.
So that's the last thing we want to worry, have our kids worry about, is safety, right?
Right.
So when they come in, enjoy what this place is and take advantage of all the things that that we have to offer here at RV. Safety should be the last thing.
Right. Yeah, so thank you very much. I mean, it really shows.
Thank you very much. Good comments, Laura.
Any other questions about the behavior report?
Anyone? Nope, seeing none.
Thank you.
All right. We have one more report here tonight. I'm sorry.
The reader is waiting to move.
Mr. Torres is going to help me with this one.
Okay.
As of tonight.
Thank you, Dean Hakkus.
Good day.
This is always the fun report, to talk about how much our kids are participating in extracurriculars, on the activity side, and then on the athletic side. So reviewing our engagement report, we found an overall engagement percentage that reached 72% this year.
So real quick, I think, Ms. Molo, we're on the prior one, the engagement report. This is the athletic summary.
It's 63.
There we go. That's it. Thank you.
So 72% at the end of this year. Again, we'll go into deeper discussion with this in October, but bringing us close to our goal at 75%, you know, our participation rates around freshmen, sophomores, juniors, saw an increase there, and so that was great, you know, all above 70%.
That's great.
However, our senior class is always, you know, an area that we always take consideration of with jobs, with different things, as, you know, varsity sports, you know, those rosters get slimmer and slimmer, so do our participation rates in certain areas, although we did see, participation rates in certain areas, although we did see, you know, Phil report added a little bit, an increase in our overall athletic numbers this year. So that's been a good thing as well. Several other key initiatives that we started this year to help out with our engagement rate, a bunch of the auto club, which has been amazing. They actually competed at the, one of the competitions at the technical institute, I think in Lyle this year. So Mr. Mannan's doing some great work in getting those kids engaged and opportunities through the auto club. Educate a Rising Club, that was something that we started at the end of this year. And that's just for future educators. This is a national organization that supports students and their efforts into getting into some type of career education-related field. And so that's going to be really cool. And there's a lot of local schools that have this program within their building. And so it's going to be nice to link up with them and to have an option for students to get started right away with, you know, either it's child development, amateur education, so on and so forth. So that's great. So we'll continue to work through those areas. And then some of the areas that we started last year, baking and pastry, coffee and tea, cybersecurity, mariachi, symphonic, I mean, those are all going great. And so, you know, want to praise the work of our sponsors. I never can thank them enough for all the added time and energy and things like that that they put to the school. Esports was a huge one this year as well. So we're seeing a lot of positives through extracurriculars and that's, you know, the fun part to report out on. So as far as additional information on your side, if you want to give a report there.
Yeah, I have the spring/winter, or spring summary and then the spring participate as well. As you can see, we had, on the report that Mr. Mannan has, 681 roster, or unique athletes. And that, they are filling 1,413 roster spots amongst those athletes. So we are up overall from last year. We had 1,337 rostered athletes across three sports. So we're up about 76 participating. Some of that is the addition of bowling. We added a level of volleyball. We saw some increase in boys' volleyball this year. We saw an increase in boys' water polo this year. And we're able to have two levels of water polo that we haven't had in a while. So some of that is helped by the coaches coaching multiple sports. They build those relationships with the students. And the students are given other sports a try because they have that relationship with the coach. So a lot of kudos and credit goes to our coaches as well with that. Overall, the spring, we had 580 students involved. That's up from 569 last year. Some awards that our students and teams have earned, 28 students earned Upstate Aid All-Conference honors. Two additional students earned honorable mention honors. We had 156 students earn all academic all-conference. That's an unweighted GPA of 3.5. And that's for our varsity team members. Boys' volleyball won the conference this year, this spring, and they advanced to a regional final. So they had a really successful year. Softball was regional champs. If you didn't see, we had a large showing and good crowds at both regional games and at their sectional semifinal game at Maris. And we're returning a majority of that team. So the future is quite bright for our softball program. We had the state qualifiers that Dr. Freitas already mentioned. They will, we will be adding their names to the big boards, the track and field record boards this summer. So they will have left their mark permanently here until the next Bulldog comes in and tries to beat that record for us. So we have that. Overall, this is our first year in the conference. I think it was a very good success, a great, a great thing for us. As Dave mentioned, it gives us 13 other schools to reach out to and problem solve, not just athletics, clubs, and just, hey, how do you guys handle this? Have you guys had this issue come up in school? So it's a great resource to be involved with similar schools, 13 public high schools, and it's provided great competition for us. I think it also, the benefit of having 14 conference schools, it helps with our lower level scheduling. It provides the extra levels that we have that maybe the previous conference didn't really have. And so it provides us the opportunity to add levels and sustain levels, being a part of such a big conference. So it's been, it's been a welcome addition. We did win seven conference championships this year. And then overall, I just want to highlight, I want to thank our sports boosters, Dr. Skinkis and the school board, because it was mentioned earlier, paying the bill on that for the weight room. But the weight room is phenomenal. If you haven't gotten a chance to go down there, now that we kind of got it settled and all ready for the kids to start using, it is a top-notch facility. So I want to make sure that I give kudos and thanks to all, all our stakeholders that helped get it to where it's at today. Our football team has been in there since last week. We opened it, they were, you know, beating on the door trying to get in there. We finally let them in last week and they love it. And our other coaches, they haven't quite gotten in there yet because they haven't started camps. They've popped in there to maybe work out themselves and they're like, this is awesome. So I just want to say thanks again for that. That's a huge addition. That should obviously continue our athletic success here and help build that foundation.
So I just want to say, I'm really pleased to hear the positive comments on the Upstate Aid Conference. I know for about the 12 months there, when we knew we were changing conferences and I know Dr. Skinkis, Dr. Freitas, many others were trying to get us situated into a new conference. And it's very good that we found a home that we can use and leverage for all kinds of support. So I think that's a positive. We don't often look back and say, remember how it was fairly stressful for a few months when we didn't have a home? And so it's good that we found a place.
Yeah, and the coaches love it because they don't have to go find all these non-conference games that they had to previously, so.
And having all public schools makes a difference in terms of a comparator, so that's good.
Yep.
And there's benefits on the activity side as well for chess and music and there's...
There's a leadership, wasn't there a leadership conference recently?
Yes.
We hosted, right. So I feel like I've heard references to Upstate Aid multiple times.
Competitive clubs, too. So like, they run something for esports even, too.
Yeah, we meet monthly as well on the activity and athletic side with all those member schools. So it's great that collaborative conversation continues year round. It's awesome.
I just think it's good. I think we definitely don't look back and remember how it was a little bit stressful there. So thank you all for everyone who worked on it. I'm sure I skipped many people. So thank you.
Questions?
Comments or questions on athletics?
Thank you.
Is that conclusion? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Freitas.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, team. Appreciate it. Information, I don't, I think there was a fairly routine FOIA request to Dr. Smetana?
Correct. There was one FOIA request for our postal meter rental and equipment. And we provided that on the board and it's included in the board package.
Thank you. Is anyone here for visitor comments this evening?
What are visitor comments?
Public comment? You can address the board. Come on, come on in. It's, we don't bite. I'm going to read a small paragraph while you get yourself situated. And when I'm done reading it, you can announce who you are and then loosely about three minutes to speak.
Wait, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Well, let me read this small paragraph before we start, if you don't mind. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor comments are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions and make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before meeting, before the meeting to the superintendent." So please take a seat, let us know who you are. And thank you for, thank you for coming.
Hi, I'm sorry, I have to write down my phone.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Hi, I'm Zachary Susie and I'm a junior here at RB. And I've come here to talk about the mariachi club.
Okay.
I'm involved in a lot of music and performing arts at our school. I am in the magical choir, the rock band, the fall play, spring musical and spring musical. But something I really look forward to each week is getting to sing with the mariachi band. We rehearse twice a week in the mornings and it's honestly one of the most unique and fun parts of my schedule. What makes mariachi special is how much the students learn in a club setting. We're all learning together and under really good leadership. We're getting better and better. Last year, I had my first public performance, thanks to mariachi. And a week later, someone from, someone from the audience recognized me in the CVS. So I think it's pretty solid evidence that it's having a positive impact on the community. That moment gave me so much confidence and it made me realize how powerful this group really is, not just musically. I want to study vocal performance in college and a lot of the applications acquired that I sing in four languages. Being part of mariachi band is helping me reach that goal by immersing me in a new language, music style and culture. It's also introduced me to new friends I wouldn't have made otherwise. I really love this group. I want to keep growing with it. I'm asking the school board to please do whatever you need to make sure mariachi continues next year, for me and for every other student who will benefit from it like I have. Thank you.
Thank you for presenting this evening. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is anyone else looking to speak tonight? No? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda items, Ms. Gasko.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Coconee, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on May 13, 2025, and May 27, 2025, open and closed sessions as presented in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Second, and we do need a, that's an all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Objections? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Durkin. Moving on to old business, I don't think we have anything in particular under life, safety, capital improvements or sustainability?
Correct.
Okay. Press plus policy issue 118, there is, as Dr. Skinkis mentioned, we're meeting next week, so I anticipate us reviewing those in July. I know Ms. Gasko had a number of comments, but if anyone else has additional comments, please feel free to circulate them.
I sent in several, like one through four.
Yes. I said, did I say Gasko? I meant Ms. Reska. I was looking at you and I said Gasko. I apologize.
It's okay.
Comfort Facility Dog, is Mr. Mannan still here?
He is, yes.
Okay. Are we ready to take action on this this evening?
I hope so, yes. I provided an update for the Board of Education. So this has been previously discussed February 25th, but then also May 13 and May 27. The district's liability insurance has confirmed that the comfort dog is covered under the district's current coverage. They strongly suggest having each family sign a waiver, so we are prepared to do that. I've attached the waiver for the boards so they can see that. It's been reviewed by both the district's liability insurance and legal counsel. And the plan is to have families sign the waiver at the annual residency event. I also included the finalized contract for the board's approval tonight, hopefully. The district's legal counsel and liability insurance has reviewed the contract. While the district is assuming liability, we believe the risk is rather low and the district is covered by our liability insurance. We are asking the board for approval tonight so that we can hopefully lock in Harley, which is the dog that has been attending on a regular basis. She has completed her training. The only hiccup after this point would be assuming that she's a good fit with both Mr. Mannan and the dog that Mr. Mannan already has at home.
So Harley has not met Mr. Mannan's dog yet?
No, not yet. We haven't had a meeting.
But hasn't been scheduled?
They won't officially assign until we have a contract in place.
Okay, understood. Were there any other questions? I think we've talked about this on a couple of occasions. Ready to move forward? You know, Dave is just here to watch.
Well, you know, our attendance rate might improve.
Yeah.
So let's make an asterisk and we'll check it.
We can have a separate line about Harley.
Yeah. All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Coconee, Illinois approves the agenda, approves the contract with canines for comfort as presented and discussed in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
A second from Mr. Durkin, and we do need a roll call, please. I'm sorry, any discussion, any additional discussion I should have asked? Now we need a roll call.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Knoback?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Kukuro?
Yes.
Congratulations, Harley. We look forward to meeting her.
I do.
Dr. Smetana, are you providing an update on the tentative budget this evening?
I am, yes. I included in the board packet the second draft of the tentative budget for fiscal year '26. General summary has previously been reviewed by the Finance Advisory Council on May 20. Since the last reading of the tentative budget, the actuals for revenue and expenditure have been updated and they're reported as of May 31st. Before July, there won't be an update due to the timing of the Fourth of July holiday. And so any necessary changes at this point will be made and presented to the board at the August meeting. I am asking that the tentative budget be approved tonight for public review, so you can post it on our, post the updated version on our website, but then also start spending in the new fiscal year. So it's important we have this budget in place. Like I previously said, we said we'll review the, and refine the budget at the August and September meeting before adopting it. Currently, we're anticipating a deficit next year of $1,374,093. This deficit's about $150,000 increase from the first read of the tentative budget in May, due to receiving a variety of accounts have slightly increased due to the May 31 actuals. And so mostly right now, the expenditures have increased, but not necessarily the revenues because the revenue information comes in in August. So it's common that the May tentative budget, the deficit will go up and then the goal is to bring it back down once we have a more detailed picture of what our revenue will be for next fiscal year. The only significant increase was for Ladsy Purchase Services for special education students, about $50,000. All the other line items, like I said, were very minimal. And so I'll present, or Dr. Skinkis will present the changes in August and that will be much more refined over the next few months.
Where, so this is presented for public viewing. And if any one of our, not only families, but anybody who lives in district, this is their budget too, wants to make a comment, where do they make those comments so we can collect them?
They can make them just either through the general comment on the website, or they can reach out to the board or Dr. Skinkis or myself directly. So there's lots of options. They can just, the easiest way to do it would be to send an email and then if you're warranted, further discussion or questions, we could answer it that way.
So maybe in front of the budget, we could just have like a little one-pager. If you wanted to leave a question or ask a, you know, or a comment, please send it to, and then give that email so that people know that it's right up front, really easy if anybody wants to make that comment.
Well, when we have the public hearing, the notice gives very explicit directions, but you're suggesting during the open viewing period?
The open viewing period on the web because not only do we want our families to look at this, we want our neighbors to look at this. This budget belongs to the neighborhood because the neighborhood supports the school. And so some, you know, this is the time where all the stakeholders get to view and see that we are being, you know, fiscally responsible with our tax dollars. And if they want to make a comment, it should be real easy, you know. How do I do that? So I don't know if we could just have, you know, after reading this, you have a question, please submit your question to this email.
Yeah, can we ask Ms. Mollo to look into some options on the website for posting? I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't think it's...
Yeah, and you know, we...
Just take it to the cover page of the budget.
And that's even easier.
Right, to the cover page. Right, to the cover page, and then we, I think we should require their name and a contact information, so that we can get back to them with, you know, an answer.
Or we recommend that people continue to...
Yes.
Watch the board meeting for discussion about the budget.
Yeah, or say, or point them to where we discussed it, you know?
Yep. So I think that's a good suggestion, Dr. Smetana. Thank you.
Any other questions on the budget?
No.
Anyone?
Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the tentative budget for FY 2026, as presented and discussed in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
We have a second. Second from Mr. Durkin, and we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuru?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Thank you very much for all of your effort on that. We'll keep talking about the budget at every subsequent meeting, I think, until the final is approved, so it's a big part of our agenda. Moving on to new business, payment of bills. Were there any questions submitted here? I don't think so.
There are none.
Okay. Would you mind?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented and discussed in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
So moved. We need a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Durkin, and we do need a roll call for bills.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuru?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska? Yes.
That carries, facility rental agreement.
Yes. Every year, the facility use agreement is presented to the Board of Education for approval, typically with minor changes from year to year. Prior to bringing the agreement to the board, we review it with the Facility Advisory Council, and this review occurred on May 29th this year. Every two or three years, we do a financial review of the costs outlined in the facility use agreement and compare rental rates with other local schools to make sure we're competitive and charging an appropriate amount. Based off of the financial review, which was completed this year, we're recommending the following changes. So facility costs increase, group two would be a $3 increase, group three would be $7, and group four is $10. Keeping in mind, group four is a for-profit group that really has no affiliation with the district, and so that's why that amount is the highest. And then the one exception is with the stadium, a slightly higher increase for that group. We realized we were a little low in comparison when looking at other school districts in terms of our stadium use. Personnel cost increase, $3 for group three, and then, sorry, $3 for group two, and then group three and four would be a $5 increase across the board. And then equipment costs mostly remain flat. We recommended two decreases, one for laptops and projectors. It's pretty rare that we actually have a request for that equipment that we charge for, but in looking at those two line items, we felt they were a little high, and we needed to adjust those. The last time the price increases were made were the 2019-2020 school year, and we've remained flat since then, and so we feel like these increases will help us stay competitive with other local school districts, as well as inflation. And then additionally, you can see, we lined items, some things that we're recommending to be deleted because they're either dated in terms of equipment, or we don't necessarily delineate between like auditory rental versus a performance versus a practice anymore. We would ask for the board's approval tonight, so that these changes can go into effect July 1st.
How do we assess, like, the charge for personnel? Like, is there a security person, or if they're doing the theater, do we need to make sure we have somebody who knows how to run everything in there, you know, somebody that oversees that everything is used appropriately? How do we assess with that?
Is that the personnel cost?
So the personnel cost, we, in turn, we collect money from the rental group, and then we, in turn, pay staff to provide those services. So that's why we're recommending an increase, is we pay airmark for maintenance, for when they are here to clean up after the event or set up for the event, things of that nature. So for group two, we're really just trying to cover our costs. We don't really bring in a lot of extra revenue for group two, and then group three is, you know, we bring in a little more revenue, and then group four is really where we bring in some additional revenue, but we don't have a lot of group four rentals. A lot of our rentals are feeder groups and district events as well.
And security is also part of personnel?
Yep.
Was the, do the price increases that happen, is it always in the summer? Or, I mean, was this the last one, 2019, 2020? Was it, is it always the same type of part of the year when they reassess?
We always reassess in May, and then the...
The increases would be for the next year?
Correct. Always for the next year.
Makes sense.
So have any of the, I should have asked this, so with group four, bringing us up to a more competitive level with these outside groups, do we think it's possible we would lose any of the outside groups that currently use the stadium? Do we jeopardize some of those?
In terms of group four, I don't think we are currently having, I don't think we currently have anybody that's using the stadium. Group four, off the top of my head, I know we have a dance company that's categorized as group four that uses the auditorium twice a year. That's the only significant...
Wasn't there a football team at one point?
There was, but there is not.
But anymore?
There is not currently.
My bad.
I think we've had a group three basketball that was a significant rental in the past, but we've taken a pause on them. Those are the two that come to mind. Like I said, a majority of our rentals are in group two.
So just to restate, you are looking for approval tonight, even though it's a first read, but it did go through the advisory committee process, and you want to get these in place for the new fiscal year. Does anyone have any objections to that or concerns? No, seeing none, then I think we can move forward.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the facility rental agreement, as presented and discussed in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Durkin, and we do need a roll call on that, please.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuru?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
That carries, thank you. We do have an action disposal list on surplus properties that you, Dr. Smetana, I'm assuming it is.
So we normally do this twice a year, in July and December. Given my upcoming absence, we move this up to June. So we've attached a list of surplus equipment and building equipment supplies that is either old or dated or repaired, and we are looking to, when possible, will look to sell the equipment, or recycle it, or donate it. Those are really the three things that we try to do. Our last option, obviously, is just to dispose of it, so the chart is provided for the board for your information.
So there were no questions on this? Any comments this evening, any questions here?
Just curious, is the piano part of that, the old piano? Is that getting...
The list is on here. I didn't see it.
I didn't see it when I was looking through it earlier. Fire from the bottom.
Steinway and Son Model O piano.
Yes.
I have someone coming tomorrow to reevaluate it again. This probably won't surprise you, but I reached out to several, several people, and I had one person that was interested, so...
We could probably light it on fire.
So hopefully that will...
Not that we would suggest that we do that.
It's closer to being firewood than a piano.
Are we good? Yep.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the disposal of surplus personal property belonging to the district that is no longer needed for school purposes, as presented in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Williams, and we do need a roll call.
Mr. Kupuru?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska? Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes. We do have in the activity count for the class of 2029.
Yes.
That's just hard to say out loud.
I just had to verify to make sure it was 2029. It's hard to believe it's almost 2030. But every year, we requested the board approve a new activity account for the incoming freshman class, because they will be holding fundraisers in the future, and we need to be able to manage these funds through their activity accounts. So we'd be asking, ideally, it'd be great if the board could approve this tonight, so that it's in place prior to the start of the school year.
Does anyone have any objection? This is pretty pro forma. Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois approves the activity account for the class of 2029, as presented and discussed in the June 10, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
So moved, and we need a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Williams, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuru?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuru?
Yes.
And last but not least, is this for action tonight, Dr. Smetana?
Yes. Unfortunately, this is an annual action, and they always give us less than thirty days to ask for board approval on this item, but it's the same from year to year. So in 2324, the district received two vans for student transportation through PACE. These are for our special education students, so one van's equipped with a lift that can accommodate seven passengers, and we replaced an old minibus, so that saved the district a lot of money. The other van holds ten people, and we often use that for our transition program when they go out into the community during the day. Each van costs the district $100 a month, so it's a great program, and the reason we can get it for $100 a month is because PACE has received a federal grant. And so in order to continue to participate in the program, the Board of Education has to adopt the attached forms on an annual basis, the FTA certification and assurances, in order to continue to participate. There have been no changes since the last time the board has approved it, and then once the board approves it, our district's legal counsel will sign off, and then I'll be able to submit it to PACE. So we just received it this month, and of course, they're asking for the forms back before June 30th.
Any questions or objections to moving this forward tonight? Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois hereby